Call the meeting to order. Pledge of Allegiance.
Recording stopped. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Let me get change.
Sure.
Dale Christie's here for the VORC grant proposal. It's the last thing we're gonna do tonight, so. Leave him up a little bit.
Sure. Where?
Do it after guests.
Okay, under guests there. Is that good Dale?
Thank you.
Is there a motion to approve with the change of the VORC grant proposal to be under guests? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Review of the November 8 regular meeting minutes. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Sir, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Open public comment.
Actually, I got a little frustrated with the grant process that we were going through. I had something I really wanted to present, and I had something I really felt passionate about. But I don't know, I put together something, I don't know if I admitted it or just didn't make it, but I just had trouble getting the information out, so I'm just gonna rebook the information I put together was and just leave it at that. The Town of Proctor's Olympus Pool has served the community for many years. It has been a focal point for many summers of fun activities. The pool has entered a reorganization phase in its journey to determine how to best serve the community and surrounding areas. Being a part of the VORC grant application would give a much-needed boost to push it in the right direction. Having an average attendance of over eighty people and a high of over a hundred on some days makes it prime for a nudge to put it back on the map. Activities including picnicking, swimming, diving, boating, playground equipment, and open field for soccer and kickball make it an enjoyable family spot. Events at the facility include swimming lessons, swim team, which we're working on, diving board competitions, water polo, and the greased watermelon challenge. Restroom facilities, a snack bar, and parking are all available to meet the needs of any individual. The addition of a pavilion to the pool area would make a wonderful multi-use area for the patrons to gather and enjoy the surroundings. It would serve as a weather shelter to weed out the passing clouds, much-needed picnicking area for families, an area to rent for large groups seeking a venue, and an area to sit for a minute and enjoy while hiking or biking the carriage trail. The proximity to the carriage trail would allow for a trail connecting to the pool. A rear gate can be opened to allow hikers and bikers to access the area and stop by for a swim or a treat before resuming on their journey. Currently, we have minimal destinations in Proctor that offer facilities and parking, and the pool would offer a destination to meet up and enjoy the outdoors. Currently, the facility is only open during summer months to serve the public, so signage would need to be made informing patrons of in-use hours. The multi-use pavilion would also serve the community and surrounding areas as a venue to rent for gatherings. Depending on the facility use agreement and fees that would be involved, we are looking at water safety courses for boating and swimming, CPR, first aid, and lifeguard classes, graduation parties, birthday parties, class reunions, weddings, and family reunions. Not only serving the community of Proctor but extending out to the surrounding area as well, some of the organizations that would benefit from its use would be area schools, scouts, and other youth programs, day camps and recreation programs. Daily use fees or season passes would be available for out-of-town patrons seeking to use the facility. Rental fees and proof of insurance for the pavilion would be set according to the group's size. Off-season rental of the area would be assessed as follows: facility use fee, coverage of lifeguards and director, and cleaning and maintenance fees. Most of the off-season work is done by volunteers, so lifeguard availability is limited. Details are still being worked on this end. An injection of revenue would help offset the pool budget while providing an area for people to enjoy or recreation. Just didn't think that got out very well, so here's that.
Do you have any questions, comments?
I think that Dale Christie is going to, when you give the update for it, aren't you going to address the pavilion as part of the overall plan?
I have no information. I'm just here to represent, based on the questions.
So Stephanie's not, is she, was she gonna come?
Yeah.
Okay, well, we'll skip over her because she's not here, and we'll jump to you Dale.
Dale, if you're just here to answer questions, I can go ahead and give a synopsis of what I had for the VORC grant. Is that okay with you?
That would be fine.
Okay. The Virginia Outdoor Recreation, ooh, I messed up. The Vermont Outdoor Recreation Grant, shoot.
That person called it that.
The committee's met twice now. VORC met last Thursday to review our research as a team and begin working on the application. As Dale Christie elegantly put it, and I'm paraphrasing, "The committee has decided to focus on connecting pre-existing destinations around town that are accessible year-round and highlight the unique outdoor experience that Proctor has to offer." To accomplish this mission, low-impact pavilions are proposed to be installed at Beaver Pond and the trailhead of the carriage trail to shelter people from the storm and provide a venue for races and other outdoor group activities. Furthermore, a new gazebo is planned to be installed at Main Street Park to provide a better theater for outdoor entertainment. To connect these features, kiosks will be installed along the scope of the project along with markers to point hikers in the right direction. The committee also felt that some kind of restroom would be important for outdoor enthusiasts who prefer to break inside of four walls and is proposing a composting facility at Beaver Pond. We encourage the select board and the public to provide feedback with the understanding that this application is due by the end of November, and we must hit a minimum project cost of fifty thousand. Lisa Mizer has taken most of the duties of drafting the action plan and the application, which I'm grateful for and willing to lend support to if needed.
So does anybody have any questions that they want to ask Dale or Lisa?
I just got a quick question. When you're talking about the carriage trail, we just needed to make sure that, like, where the plowing happens at the rain, and we weren't sure where the pavilion was. Were you guys thinking about putting it there? Because there's a lot of places that are plowed in the winter. That was the only thing that, was just a question.
No, I didn't discuss that.
Okay, that's just one thing that I wanted to throw out there just as a.
We definitely could.
No, I think you would, but I just wanted to put that out there just for.
Yeah, just to emphasize on why we chose Beaver, why the committee chose Beaver Pond and the carriage trail is because they act as public goods in all aspects of the definition, kind of like a lighthouse is a public good, it can't be restricted, anyone can use it. So the reason, you know, and Mr. Oberg did bring up that the pool would like to have a pavilion, but we thought since it was locked up for a large portion of the year that it might not fall within the scope of this project or grant funding.
I did a little research on the restroom part of this, Lisa, and I'm not so sure that, before you got really into writing the grant proposal, I thought we might want to consider leaving it out entirely. It just doesn't look feasible to me. There's costs involved with both for supplies and maintenance upkeep. The two options were, let's see here, composting toilet and porta-potties, and you have to budget for maintenance and supplies, and we hadn't projected that. So that's just my opinion. I don't know, I say it's something that we can live without. I don't know how all of you feel about it, but.
I've been to the composting toilets they have.
What?
I've been to the composting toilets they have at National Forest. That's just.
Not nice.
They're not nice. You're gonna have to maintain, you're gonna have to budget money.
Right.
Is there a way that you could do some type of, like, small, like, normal type of bathroom within the schedule of the budget?
Plumbing and all of that for fifty thousand, and in the wintertime? No. That was all.
So really, we're on a tight timeline. The ideal situation here is that we present to you a full-fledged out application and plan. That's probably not just gonna happen with the holiday. The reason I had another discussion action items is that we wanted to make sure that the select board was comfortable, at least the majority of the select board was comfortable with what we were proposing in the application.
And then just, let you guys go forward because we're not gonna meet until now, but when the jury, you hear it.
Correct. And we're not proposing any match. So if all of this, the idea is all of this would be funded by the VORC program.
So are you looking tonight for a motion for us to approve? You're just going forward with the application?
It will be need. Are you talking about tearing down a gazebo or a disability in another? Because hard work.
We still would think, I think it needs to be replaced. Right, it would be, we're proposing a replacement gazebo in the same spot, a little thicker.
So that would be like a typical historical gazebo, rotunda, and then basic shelters, and one at the trailhead and one at Beaver Pond. Simple rustic look, but certainly efficient.
And to avoid putting, we don't want signs everywhere, so to avoid signs, we, they put these little brass plaques in the sidewalk that you can follow, and we thought what would really be need if we could figure out how to do it was if you were walking towards Beaver Pond, you have little beavers in the sidewalk. If you were walking to the carriage trail, well, carriages, if you're, you know, I know that's kind of kitschy, but.
Art-y.
It's art-y, but I thought it was clever.
Easy to follow.
Yeah.
That sounds like a great plan. I like it. Make a motion to.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll say.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. You may move forward.
I know that's hard work. Thank you.
All right, well, we'll just move on to good stuff. I just want to mention, and Lisa, if I forget anything, which I probably could, we're having the Christmas tree lighting on December 10th in the park, and we're having at the library Santa Claus with the children, can all come there, and we're gonna have giveaways for them, and we'll have hot chocolate cookies and everything like we normally do, but it's gonna be moved to the library, so. And I also, someone's getting wreaths for the signs entering Proctor. We, our yard gets those, the Christmas tree wreaths, so they're going to go pick those up, and I also tell them to look for a nice tree that we could place in the gazebo, so. I'll let you know if we need somewhere to go pick that up.
In addition, that John Corless got some signs to put up along the poles too, so I think that'd be a nice addition.
Okay, okay.
Thank everybody who came to the production last weekend. We had the best attendance we've ever had, especially Saturday and the night, actually it was very, very attended, and it was very well-attended. So can't thank my colleagues and the community for supporting that program enough, so thank you.
All right. Okay, we're gonna move on to the highway department. Operations report.
Outside of that operations report, I don't have anything substantial to add.
Anybody have any questions on the highway part?
No.
Is there a motion to go into the Board of Water Commissioners? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Operation Report on the Water. Anybody have any questions?
John was replacing the hydrant down by the town garage there, and he thought it was a bad valve, which is a good a guess as anybody's, and it wasn't. It's just too small a water main. These four-inch water mains don't seem to support the flow that's required of these hydrants, so we're gonna have to think about replacing some of these older four-inch lines with something a little bigger in the future.
And that's something John and I discussed as well for the next hydrant that needs to be replaced on oak. But once, there's, there does seem to be a feasible plan on oak, because you do have an eight-inch line running across the road. I don't know the roads well enough, but we can connect a new line that's already eight-inch over that hydrant. Most likely wouldn't be something that we start until spring.
Chief, a hydrant that doesn't quite meet flow standards, does that make you nervous?
Depending on location, yes. There are some that we can leave as they sit, because there's a close enough one that we can hook with a line and drag in instead.
You wouldn't hitch up to a hydrant that didn't meet flow?
Typically, no, because at that point, we haven't collapsed lines trying to drive that much pressure out. Most of our pumps and our trucks are fifteen-hundred gallon pumps, so it won't take too long to collapse small and older mains.
Anything else that we have on the highway? Or water, sorry.
Oh, under the Water Commissioners, we're still in the Water Commissioners, I do have a letter here from Hillary Lambert. I was hoping that John Corless would make it, but he hasn't yet made it yet to the meeting. I don't really know the history behind it.
Right. I don't either.
I was hoping you would. Well, I was hoping that maybe the board had heard something about it, but Stan had been working with Ms. Lambert on this for a while. It just sounds like she's stating that she wants a fee forgiveness, that she had been disconnected quite a while ago but was still being charged.
I don't see how we can prove that.
That she was disconnected.
That she was using water.
Okay.
She had said from the very beginning, if I remember correctly, that, you know, she wasn't using water. She had put her on well in.
I know at one time there was some problems getting access to actually verifying it.
I'd heard that as well, but they couldn't go in there to verify it for some reason, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, like I said, like I said, I apologize. I was gonna lean on the foreman to go over this, because I think he had a little bit more institutional knowledge around the back and forth.
But if we wait to make a decision.
We can do it.
So I take it, so I guess my question is, why wait five years later and say, I don't want to pay this anymore? Why wait five years? I mean.
So I feel like I remember there were two properties in question, there were two water bills in question, and one was supposed to be stopped and the other, I don't, I only vaguely remember this. So I think, even if John could just write us a little summary of his view of it.
Okay.
So we'll just continue that to.
Next meeting.
The next meeting. And if John could come, that would be good.
Yes.
Yeah, that'd be the idea. Probably can get some more history from Stan to want to get over.
All right. Now, delinquent account reports, right?
I apologize, Celia was under the weather all last week, so she wasn't able to prepare delinquent reports for you this select board meeting.
All right. Is there a motion to go out of Water Commissioners and to the Board of Sewage Commissioners?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I just had a question on the quarry. Was it us that hit that, or was it Kerberky that hit it? Are they just working with us, or are they the ones that actually hit the manhole over at Frank Beattie's property?
I'll have to get with John and get back with you on that.
Sounds okay, look.
All right, any other questions? All right. Do you want to go up to take care of the local hazard mitigation plan?
We gotta go back to the regular meeting.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if we jump back up there. Is there a motion to go out of the Board of Sewage Commissioners, back to the regular select board meeting?
So moved. Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right, do you want to address that now, or hold off five more minutes?
I don't think.
The local hazard mitigation plan? Yeah, sure.
All right, that way we won't keep everybody.
Great, so, good evening, everyone. My name is Stephanie Burke, I'm a regional planner with the Regional Planning Commission, and I'm here tonight on behalf of Proctor's planning team to present their work to date on the local hazard mitigation plan update. So Proctor's current hazard mitigation plan, which is from 2017, is set to expire next year, so you've got a really large and diverse planning team that's been working diligently to get your plan update ready to coincide with when your current plan expires, and really, were it not for their efforts, you know, we'd be nowhere on this plan update. So I'd like to just acknowledge your team members by name. We've got Kevin Blonge, John Corless, Ben Curtis, Tom Dohy, Lisa Mizer, Michael Ramsey, and Chief Webb. So you've got a really good team that's met several times now, and I'm basically working with them to help facilitate their meetings and make sure that the plan contains all the federally required contents by the time they're done with their work. So in your meeting packet, you should have a copy of the local mitigation plan review tool. This basically is a checklist used by FEMA and the state hazard mitigation officer to review the plan once it's submitted to make sure that it does contain all those federally required contents. So you'll see in the version that you have in your packets, I've got sections of the plan that will ultimately address all of these criteria, but the page numbers are listed as TBD or to be determined, because we're only about halfway through the plan development process at this stage. But the team has reached their first critical milestone in the plan development process, and that's work through the hazard identification and risk assessment section of the plan. So one of the things that FEMA stresses in terms of requirements for plan development is providing opportunities for public engagement during the development process, not just at the end. So tonight, we're basically sharing work through the midpoint so that we can make sure that we have all of, all that interest represented, and make sure that we've got a solid platform in terms of identifying the hazards and the risks appropriately, as we then will move on to develop a mitigation strategy to address those. So in the plan working draft that's dated today, November 22nd, you'll find a very brief introduction, and I think what's important about the introduction for you to key in on is how hazard mitigation is defined. It's a very different perspective than emergency response. This is not your local emergency management plan, which is a response-based plan. This is a mitigation plan that is more of a document to outline some maybe longer-term investments in the community to help reduce your future risk to natural hazard impacts. Okay? So the plan purpose outlines basically the benefits of mitigation planning, of which there are many, and it also states that once this plan's adopted, it's not legally binding. This is not some kind of contract between the town and FEMA. This is really a municipal planning tool, okay? We then, Section 3, provide kind of a thumbnail sketch of a community profile to help the reader understand what attributes of your community might make it more resilient or more vulnerable to the impacts of natural hazards. Section 4 is where we're gonna be documenting the planning process. So you'll find in that section some yellow highlighted placeholders, and that's okay, because this is a work in progress. Then we go into Section 5, which is the hazard identification and risk assessment, where your planning team has basically done a risk assessment where they rank what they believe the community's highest risk natural hazards are, and then for those, there's a profile developed that outlines basically locations where the community's vulnerable to the impact and what assets tend to be at risk in those locations. We include a history for each of, a chronological event history for each of the highest risk hazards, and then we end Section 5 kind of with an overall summary of, you know, the location, the vulnerable assets, the extent or magnitude of the most severe weather event, the financial impacts based on that weather event, and the probability of that kind of event happening again in the future. So I like to think of the hazard identification and risk assessment as being the foundation for the mitigation strategy to reduce future losses. So that's the work that they've completed to date. In terms of next steps, I'd like to get some feedback from the select board regarding an appropriate public comment period. What I'd like to recommend is that we open the public comment period following tonight's meeting, make the plan available on both digital and then, like, hard copies, platforms, maybe have a copy here at the town office, and then close the public comment period to coincide with your, your first meeting in December, should be around the 13th? Yes? December 13th?
13th, yeah.
Yeah. And that way you could maybe have a brief, maybe 10-minute agenda item on your December 13th meeting for folks to come and discuss the plan, share with you any comments they might have, and then the minutes, or someone here could be kind of documenting what those are to get them to Michael, because Michael will be the point of contact to receive comments during this public comment period. So how do folks feel about that kind of timeframe and process?
I think it's also.
And that was kind of what we looked at, is make it make more sense.
Okay, so what I'm gonna do with the version that's dated tonight is I'm gonna go back and just, in the plan development process table, fill in that placeholder before we issue it for public comment, so that it's clear in the plan, you know, what the comment period is, and it has clear instructions for how to submit comments. Great. So following the public comment period closure, the planning team will resume their work. They'll address any comments that are received and incorporate those into the Appendix D of the plan, and then they'll begin work on the mitigation strategy, where they'll be evaluating a range of actions and making recommendations for those which are reasonable and practical for the town to try to. for the town to try to implement. Once the planning team is comfortable with a solid final draft, we'll be back again to present that at a select board meeting and again have a similar public comment period. Once both the planning team and local officials are comfortable with the final draft, we'll then submit that to the state hazard mitigation officer for what we call approval pending adoption. So kind of think of it as a preliminary approval before FEMA approves it. But once you get approval pending adoption from the state, all you're doing is returning that plan to the select board for it to be adopted. No changes to the plan after you get that approval pending adoption. So that's why it's really important everybody's comfortable with the draft that gets submitted for that, okay? So once you adopt the plan, then it gets resubmitted to FEMA for final approval, and it's that FEMA final approval date that starts the five-year window on this plan. The plan has a five-year lifecycle, so that FEMA final approval date is what starts your five-year window. Okay?
Does anybody have any comments, questions yet?
Yeah, I think that's a great way to...
This is really impressive, I think.
So in the back of the plan, Appendix B is a map that should, it should dovetail with the narrative description that's in the hazard profiles regarding the general location of some of your high-risk areas. If you're looking at the map in a digital version, you can kind of zoom in and pan around, and it's easier to view, but in hard copy, it's way too small. So there's a large format map that'll be available here at the town office. And I know right out of the gate, we're lacking the location of some of the wildfire risks because those were kind of general in nature, and we weren't really sure how to depict those on the map. So during the public comment period, you may want to mark the map up with some, you know, the wildfire icons to flesh that out a little bit. Okay?
Thanks, Stephanie, and I think the pictures really tie it together well, too, right? We've not put those in at the closing hour, but that's...
Thank you, Dale.
Yes, and your planning team definitely, and I've noted that on the back of the front page, that all the photos are courtesy of Dale Christie. He really saved your team in terms of, you know, adding some visual interest, let's say, to the plan.
Making it a little more interesting to read.
Yes. It was a little dry without any... If everybody's good, I'm going to peel out and let you get on with the rest of your meeting, okay?
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Stephanie.
Good one. Planning team members will be in touch regarding our next meeting date.
Thank you.
Oh, Stephanie?
Managers report, passive risk management report.
In your packet is a copy of the passive risk management report from the last inspection. Again, remodeling has significantly reduced workplace risks, and improvements will be reported to our representative as they are made. I have an update to that list already. We put the clip for the fire hydrant against the wall. That was one of the hits, so it's taken care of. And the wire's gone across. We still have one more that we haven't fixed yet, but we're close. We did have four, five, and now we just have one, so we'll get there. Junk vehicle complaint, this is old business. Following up with a complaint, sheriff deputies patrolled Kane Street and found no vehicles in violation of town ordinance. Correspondence of the report is in your packet. Jacob Dorman resignation. The town's assistant assessor Jacob Dorman has accepted a full-time position with the city of Burlington as the deputy assessor, and I would like to thank him for his service to the town and convey my thoughts that he will be missed, and I wish him the best of luck in the big city. Legal services RFP have been posted. The town of Proctor has issued a proposal request for legal services. The solicitation was sent to firms around the area and has been posted to the Proctor webpage. I would also like to thank Alan George for his many years of service to the town and hope to see his name in the selection pool. Annual report printing quotes. I will admit I'm a little behind on this because the clerk was under the weather last week, and the timeline has to be just right to fit the pieces together, to get warrants out, include the audit, et cetera. The plan is to work with the clerk, the town clerk, have bids out before the holidays, and have the select board choose a bid winner at our next select board meeting. North Street Bridge, light cleanup will be happening around the bridge until mid-December, but travelers should not expect any more significant impacts from the project. Grant-in-aid project search for FY22. Thankfully, Stan executed an agreement for the FY22 grants-in-aid program two days before my arrival in August 28th. Those are the emails that scare me, when they show up and say, "Your grant should be executed," and I don't know what they're talking about, but Stan did kind of make sure these things were taken care of. So it's now up to the public works foreman to find a feasible project from the selection listed in the municipal inventory spreadsheet made available to you in your packets, and I'm more than happy to work with him on this selection. Willow Sewer Project easement update. My ground game was failing, so construction easements have been sent out via the United States Postal Service. Landowners have been given until December 10th to return the easements and have them notarized. This service will be provided at the town clerk's office if necessary. And the Rutland Regional Planning Commission Board of Commissioners meetings. I attended my first one as the Proctor representative last week. It was a pleasure meeting everyone, and I look forward to continuing this activity. At the meeting, we heard about a new stormwater pollution mitigation program that will soon be available to localities, had an update from the Grand Posenobb Community Wind Rep, and saw a proposed solar project in my beautiful hometown of Pauline. Budget prep, a large portion of my time has been spent...
Come up for air. Easements for the Willow Street Sewer Project, do you see any issues there, do you think?
I don't think there's going to be issues just for the fact that most of these deeds have easements. You know, there are utilities running through there, and the town has the right to access its infrastructure. I don't think there will be a big problem, and most homeowners have been working with me pretty well on it. I also think with the boring that they're going to do alongside Eden will lessen a lot of the impacts that were planned prior to my inspection of the project. Yeah, sorry, I get going, I just go right on through. All right, so a large portion of my time has been spent over the last month learning how the town spends its money, and I hope to have provided you with a fiscally responsible outline that will be presented later this evening. And lastly, fuel bids. The contract has been signed by Chantling Fuels and is inside your packet. And I do want to make an addition to the managers' report. We have updated the website again to let people know to not put their leaves into the street, and that the parking ordinance is in effect for winter, and that the town offices are going to be closed Thursday and Friday. And that concludes my managers' report. If you have any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer them.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Exhausted now.
It's pedal to the metal for the spending.
Yeah.
Okay, discussion and action items from the board. The bills, everyone saw the bills? Not the Buffalo Bills. Sheriff's report. Any questions on that? Radar signs.
Okay, inside your packet, you will find two quotes for solar radar signs. This was brought up at the last select board meeting. The quotes average around six grand, and that would be for two signs. This does not include, I had a few questions for them. The main thing about this is they're heavy, so you just can't put them on a regular post. You got to purchase a sturdy post, and we'd have to get a base, and we'd have to put some concrete in the ground. So we would have to allocate money into the line item for signs in order to purchase them. Aside from that information, it would just be important if we did move along with this, we had a clear idea of where they were going to go.
Yeah, I think we have to look at our budget all the way through, and, you know, then maybe as we complete that, and maybe you could find out some information on the cost of actually mounting it. There may be a significant cost there.
I think that, I think it comes with a mounting bracket, so all you do is mount the sign on it and...
Yeah, but what we would have to have for a post and that type of thing, you know, might be a few hundred dollars.
I don't want to digress and keep people here longer, too, but I will add, a neat feature of these is that they track, there's software that tracks the speed of people. So what you can do, you can turn it off and see how many people are speeding, and then actually turn it back on and see what a difference it's making. So you can actually monitor your investment, which is kind of...
I think it would take some discussion as to where we would mount these, so...
I definitely think we need to go through the budget first, just to see how tight it is.
I just wanted to get an idea.
I do think they're a good idea.
Yeah. All right, I think it's, you know, maybe down the road a little bit, but let's see our budget numbers look and go from there.
Grand Posenobb Community Wind Project.
This is a discussion and motion item as requested by the board, select board at our last meeting.
All right, who asked first?
I think the thought was whether we're going to vote to express our support or lack of support to the project.
Yes.
Yeah, I think, I don't think we're going to have any really sight things as far as, you know, seeing that personally.
Tom, is it right that the planning commission moved to...
The planning commission doesn't like it. Our town plan doesn't like commercial wind turbines, commercial solar panels, so...
And I've heard that, I was at a meeting the other night, and there was just a side discussion of that, but it seems to be rather negative, the comments, so...
The regional planning commission doesn't support it either.
No, no.
So I make a move that we not support it.
Second?
So do you just not formally, I mean, we could basically just say we don't have, we don't have any skin in the game anyway, so it's like, we just don't go either way? Or you want to formally write something that says we don't approve this project?
I think we should, you know, follow our town plan that the people voted on.
So how about the solar, you know, like the solar fields that have gone up? Or are they just right outside of town limits?
The solar ones are inside, you know, the town.
You're talking about West Proctor?
Yeah.
We don't support them in the village area.
Those were done prior to the town plan and energy plan.
Before we even were basically aware of solar.
Same owner wants to put the wind turbine up.
Yeah, that was all done prior to adoption of the plan.
But if our plan, so basically before they said we don't want wind turbines and solar panels, that, those are placed there, and then we...
Those the grandfather did, so...
Right, okay.
That's why we had Gib Street, so we had to follow a different pattern with Gib Street because we have different rules.
Right.
It's the size of the solar farm.
Exactly.
That makes the difference. The town didn't have any oversight due to the size of the solar farm on West Proctor Road. They came to the planning commission, but because of the way the state regulations are and the size of that solar farm, the town did not have oversight.
They told the planning commission right up front that, you know, we really don't care if you don't like it or not, it's the way it is.
And so now that you have the plan in place, where everyone's agreed to it, that puts some teeth into it, and you can shut them all down?
No, it puts some baby teeth into it. We can object, we can't not allow them.
On some private property, if they wanted to, they could do that.
It's up to the public service board.
Yeah.
And again, it depends on how big. If it's small enough, then they can do it without even telling us. It's residential...
Like on Gib Street, that is small enough, energy-wise, that it...
Well, we do have, part of our ordinance is in place, is that you need to have a street area of 20 feet. So that was the issue with the Gib Streets, that they needed a street area of 20 feet around it to kind of make it at least fit in a little bit. So we do have, if it's a ground roof-mounted, there is nothing, there really is nothing that we can do, but ground mounted, we have a little bit of way to go.
And that landowner was very good to deal with.
Yeah, he cleared it up even before I even got up there, so he had it all taken care of.
The two farms on the West Proctor Road, the big one is easy to deal with, they're more willing to do what we reasonably ask. The small one is, see, just the smaller one, he just doesn't follow any of the rules. We really don't, can't do anything about it. And we aren't the only town that that's happened in.
I will add, as the representative on the board, I feel obligated to let you know that Sam Carlson is now posing the argument that it is not, it is not an industrial wind project.
He said that when he was here.
Okay, I couldn't remember.
Well, I agree with Tom, that if you really don't want them in the village or in the town boundaries, then we probably should make a statement.
I think we should.
Yeah.
It's consistency.
It's not in our town, though.
It's not in the regional plan and...
No, but our town plan that the people voted on.
Oh, I know, but we're saying you don't allow those in our village, and this turbine isn't even in our town.
Right.
That's what I'm saying.
A small piece of Proctor, you could see the tower from, that's the only reason we're included.
But you'd hope a budding town would support us, some thinking, and we went to West Rutland or Cassington or Clare, then, I mean, that's part of the whole concept of Rutland Regional Planning Commission, and I think that's why they took, made the motion first not to approve it. So I think that it's a good faith effort to support your budding communities because you hope they would do the same for you.
Exactly.
Strike the numbers.
So do you want me to draft the letter?
All right, that'd be fine, just something short and sweet that, you know, we don't approve of it.
Okay, it'll be short and sweet.
Thank you. Well, that's, I think you got the gist of our feelings that night was here.
Yeah.
Okay, so there was a motion and a second, right?
Yes.
All right. Okay.
The question, not to go on the subject, but on what grounds, there's a lot of grounds to disapprove of these wind towers, and I haven't heard of any, like the grounds of disapproving the project of the wind tower. And I could think of many on my own, but I just didn't hear any discussed, and I was just wondering on what grounds, or is it just basically public, public, you know, support or disapproval, or like what are the grounds of the...
Well, I think a lot of it came from Pittsburgh coming to our meetings, and they're, they don't want it, they're, you know, and again, supporting them. But I think there were a lot of things raised at that one where, you know, just the sight of it, the fact that they're concerned that there was going to be more down the road, even though they say there's not. And also the road, there is a road, but it's going to have, some people think it's going to have to be expanded to get those turbines up there, so the blades and stuff, so...
Well, they also discussed in 20 years when it's decommissioned, the environmental... Well, they also discussed in 20 years when it's decommissioned, the environmental impact of getting rid of all the pieces parts.
Right. Yeah, there's a lot of, there's monstrosity, windmills are having some major faults.
It'd be the same with solar panels too, so... Nice blue fields that we have. So, Lister's contract.
Inside your packet, you will find an FY22 Lister's contract, a motion to approve this will award Lisa Wright the position for another fiscal year. You will also find a letter from Karen Folger, who is seeking part-time employment with the town of Proctor to perform the duties of assistant assessor, which Jacob Dorman was doing. She comes highly recommended by Lisa Wright, is currently working for neighboring towns as an assessor, and is offering a competitive labor rate as a part-time employee.
So the only problem I see with Lisa's contract is that it says between the town of Proctor and Lisa Wright, but on the second, third, and fourth pages, it's the right creative company in the town officially.
I will make sure that those edits are made.
Also, she has her calculation, doesn't make, she has four days a month, three hours a day, and then at 2,1750 a day. So that basically came, she, when I factored it out and I kept doing it, it came out to $10,440, and she comes up with $13,050. And she has 60 days. So I don't know where she comes up with the 60 days when it's four days a month. If I do the math, it's...
Are you getting more or less?
I'm getting less than she's charging.
Uh, she's accounting for holidays, I believe. Wait, you're getting less than what she's charging, okay. Well, then, no, that wouldn't make sense.
She's charging too much.
She's charging. Yes, and, well, I can look into it.
Yeah, because they just don't match up. I mean, she's saying four days a month, which would be 48, and then down below, she's saying 60 days. Do you know what I'm saying?
Yes, that should only be 48, plus she's subtracting two weeks of vacation.
Yeah. When I was going through the budget, this came in kind of last minute, and I had, I had bumped, she, we had a conversation about her fee going up to, what was it, 7250, I think?
Yep.
So that's the way I did the calculation, and then she submitted this, and I remember it was pretty close to what I'd budgeted for, so that's about where I stopped at.
Yeah, I just would like it clarified. And I just wanted to raise too, I'm just asking why we need an assistant assessor.
I don't want to speak for Lisa, but she would argue that the assistant assessor's doing most of the grunt work, and their fees are much less than hers, so she's sending them out to do, to do that. But I can invite her to the December 13th meeting to kind of explain this stuff to us.
I mean, I'm just thinking, you know, with a population of less than 1,700, and we have one and a half assessors, and a city of 17,000 has one. I don't know, I just questioned it. Does anybody else have any comment or feelings on it?
Just a little bit nervous when the lady that crunches the numbers writes a contract this bad.
I think we'd like to hear from her.
Have her attend the meeting, yeah.
Thank you all.
Rink opening, COVID protocols.
So Megan's here, but I did tell her that I would talk about this. So either way works for me, but what we're proposing, what Megan is proposing is that when the rink opens, we require masks indoors. It's open to all the publics, so not just restricted to property residents, and for people to stay at home if they're not feeling sick. Those were the general guidelines we were going to follow. We just wanted to make sure that the board felt satisfied with that.
Anybody have any comment?
You're saying that they would wear masks when they come skating?
If they were inside the building.
Oh.
But if they were outside, it would be optional.
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah, and whatever the manager wants, as far as I'm concerned, is fine with me.
I just got a message to see if we're open for ice skating tonight. Oh my God, no, it's to one year.
Go with the Brian.
I just wanted to make sure that we're on the same page, that it could be open to everyone, masks inside, and, because last year we had to do contact tracing, the temperatures, and we didn't want to have to do that again. That if you guys were okay with it, we were just going to do open it to everyone and...
Sure, unless the numbers go sky high or something.
It does, it's very different with everyone now compared to just Proctor.
Yeah.
We only had a shut once from COVID.
But if the state mandates these things, then we would all have to do it.
Yeah.
But...
Everything's definitely going to be played by your...
Sure.
Sure. Keep it open as much as you can.
Absolutely. But I just want to make sure you guys are on board with what we want.
Thank you.
Definitely.
Ryan, go start making some lights.
Tomorrow night.
Maybe it's colder in New Jersey.
Yes.
All right, general fund budget review.
Members of the select board, I am pleased to present to you my first draft budget of the general fund. After a meeting with volunteers and department heads, it is my hope that this budget reflects their needs as they were presented. You will see that there's less than a 1% increase in proposed expenditures, which is mostly due to a decrease in expected insurance costs and relocation of public works, operations, labor across departments. Increases in expenditures that offset these savings includes inflated fuel costs, 3% raises for full-time staff, an increase to the fire department's equipment sinking fund, and a proposal by the pool director to open the facility seven days a week with more training opportunities for lifeguards. I look forward to your comments and thank those who were able to attend as representatives of their departments.
Sounded extremely professional.
Thank you. I can't help but do it.
So how do you want, do you want to go through each, like...
I would recommend, who is here, we go through their department first so they can...
That's a good idea.
Yep.
Rest.
Okay.
And we can start with whoever wants to go first.
Let's see.
I think the rink would probably be the easiest.
I know. Need headers.
I'll get headers this time.
This is the one you used to write.
You'll hard not find the right sized paper. That's your highway.
Page from the back.
Park, skating, got it. Okay. It's pretty flat-lined from last year, I mean, there's no, no...
It's lower by $56 and $57.
That's a pretty good ratio. Budget to expenses.
Anybody have any questions on it?
This looks good.
All right. That was easy.
Thanks, guys. Appreciate you, man, I really did it.
Here it is, okay. We'll do fire next.
What are we doing?
Fire, which is just like a couple pages back, not just one back.
So the only difference I see really is the 5,000, the only jump is for the equipment fund.
And I did make a few adjustments, light adjustments, and when you do that, I look further back than just fiscal year 2021, I've got the ability to look at 20 and 19, so if I see a trend, and things were low, then I'll lower it a little bit, if I think it's necessary.
So is it, am I looking correctly at the sinking funds? That balance for that equipment fund right now is $74,158.50.
To the best of my knowledge, that's correct, yeah. Say that number again? That is for, I believe that's for the, I don't, one of those is a bigger number. So...
It just says fund balance, equipment fund, oh, there's more to it.
Yeah.
Well, the one above it seems to be highway because of salt shedding, and everything else is in that one.
And there should be another one behind it, one is supply, and one is equipment.
We have 314,000. 319, 381, the number I got from Silia.
Yeah.
And then the PTE is 26,94, and then the building is 21,888.
I see it now, fund balance, fire department.
Got it.
Yep.
Each page should represent a different, or should, what I was looking through earlier.
Okay, yeah, I got it, thank you.
You got anything to add to that, John?
Well, a lot of it's driving with what needs to be replaced, and the fact that prices are skyrocketing. I talked to two different manufacturers, first of the year, one is going up 21%, and another one's going up 31%. Now, on the docket, we have to replace engine two by 2024, and the tanker is well over to minus 91. Life expectancy is about 20 years on the trucks. So, kind of, to eliminate some costs, we are actually going to replace those two trucks with one to kind of mimic the expenditures. And then, right after the trucks, we have to replace all the air packs, they are coming to their life end. That all happens within the next five to seven years. Unfortunately, from date of order, most trucks are running almost 18 months right now. So that means we have to be fairly quick getting old orders to meet that 2024 deadline.
Any questions?
What's your feeling, I know Rutland is leasing one of their trucks, what's your thoughts on that? Just as a, not that we may not do it, but just curious as to your...
It has some upside, but you're still paying the money for them.
Yeah.
I'd rather not be having payments throughout and as a budget, buy what the budget allows and not overspend for it, because that just puts you further down, down.
Right, yeah.
Where were you looking? Where did you get, where are you getting your trucks?
Right now, we've been buying each one, but we go with the bid every time we purchase, so it'll be usually three or four manufacturers, and we'll decide from what they come in at, and our design, what we do spec.
I know when the city just got, well, they got two.
Yep.
But the last one was down, well, they're down south, so they had, because of all the flooding and stuff too, that kind of put a, you know, a kibosh to getting them on time, and bumped up expenses and stuff, so... They are pricey, and I think it's much wiser to put aside money like this instead of all of a sudden coming up with, you know, $900,000 a year. All right. Anybody else have questions on it? Okay. All right. Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to the pool.
71.
Yeah, Angela couldn't make it. Didn't input it in your packet, but I did send it out in email this morning. The proposal that she gave to me to justify some of the numbers that, that are reflected on this budget report.
Yeah, I think it was like 5,000 more to, to have it seven days a week rather than six.
A little bit more, maybe.
Yes.
Under 10,000, I believe, but...
Five to seven, it was only seven.
Right. Yeah.
So if you take that increase out, the actual real increases on it are about $100,000.
Ultimately, all along, that party's surely been left alone before COVID. They should have stayed at the seven days a week. They're just using the reduced time because of COVID.
Right.
Two years has been really messed up.
Yeah. I'd like to see if we can't have it seven days a week. It's such a short season and...
How long that is, is, we're having to start from scratch to try to get people for swim lessons and get people...
Right.
We have to start from scratch basically, because we didn't have anything.
I think it's an important asset to the community to have that open.
Will tapestry be allowed to attend the pool this year?
That was budgeted for currently one to two days a week, but that is going to be up for discussion because currently they are not running staff, so they're not very open very much to school right now, so I'd really like to revisit that whenever we come that time to see if they have staff available. Because the lifeguards are there for lifeguarding, they're not there to take care of the kids. So, I mean, I think that's something we need to revisit when we get closer and closer. But it is for one to two days, yes, so, I mean, one to two days we have budgeted in that plan to have adequate coverage, because we would like to have more lifeguards on duty to provide adequate protection for the water.
How do you plan on getting additional lifeguard? You had such a problem with them last two years.
Well, currently, we have two lifeguards for sure that will be available next year. One that is for sure wanting to do the swim lesson certification. We have currently up to eight that have interest coming in next season to be available. So we have eight, the availability we have to get them trained and get them to pools, basically. But we have up to eight, between eight and 10, that are interested in coming back, and two for sure.
Yeah, I think the reason we had a problem was, you know, we were only open, really limited, and that cut down the interest for lifeguards. If you're going to have, you know, seven days a week, I think you've got a better chance of getting staff.
The last time it was seven days was 2020?
2019.
Do we know what the labor budget was then?
I can look it up.
I think we should stay with six movies this coming year with still COVID issues, and we're certainly going to have issues with hiring help. Even Pittsburgh had, everybody had problems. Even Pittsburgh had, everybody had problems hiring lifeguards this year.
The labor rate is going to be higher, but we're actually scheduling for more coverage. So the labor rate is going to be higher than it was.
Right. I was just curious in like 2019, how many we had up there?
I don't remember what it was, but it's going to be higher.
Well, it was Tammy, it was Heidi, I'll have it in the four. So it's quite high up there. I'll have it.
That's a pretty good increase though for two and a half months.
But they were, were they open seven days then, their last year?
Last year, they were open five.
No, I meant their last year.
No, I think so.
I think they were, they were only open three.
The Tapestry was there every day that could be there.
Yep.
If you go back, we've actually talked to the former directors. So if you actually go back, whatever happened in the previous few years here is what Tapestry became every day. It used to be, you know, back when Kevin Duggan was doing it, Tapestry was one day a week. That's what Kevin said, so that's what I.
Well, I was on Park and Rec. I can give that time as well, I know that's inaccurate. But Tapestry children are Proctor residents and last year there was no problem. And they, we had to transport them to Pittsburgh because they couldn't be at their local pool. So I guess it's slightly confusing for hiring additional staff. I guess I would question, what's the difference if I went up with eight kids or someone from Tapestry goes and takes eight students? Well, what's the differential with that?
Well, the difference is that there was problems. They did not have adequate staff.
But either.
They harassed, they harassed the lifeguards while they were sitting in chairs. And they were not paying attention to what they needed to do. So there was problems. And we cut it off before it became a major problem, someone losing life. So, I mean, we're trying to give them opportunities. Tapestry takes over the pool and it's a community pool. It's not a Tapestry pool. It's a community.
Right, but you opened the pool to everyone last year.
Yeah, nobody was denied access to the pool. They could come up with their family, they could come up with whatever they want. The Tapestry program has had an issue though with providing staff and providing adequate supervision for the children.
That just, you know, I'd see them walking up there and they'd be, these little kids would be spread out for a quarter of a mile, you know? I don't know where the adults were, but our sidewalk on South Street's very close to the road. It'd be nervous a couple of days.
You have questions?
Yeah, I mean, it seems like borderline the pool's being used as a daycare facility for these kids on a regular basis almost. And it seems like there should be some type of, at least financial arrangement for the extra service because, I mean, it appears like it's almost taking advantage of the services the town offers. I do see Lisa's point as well, but it seems a little worse.
Tapestry does pay to go to the pool.
Okay, all right.
And actually, they went to Pittsburgh last year afterward and there were no issues or concerns there. So, last year, I think there were three students that are not Proctor residents that attend Tapestry. So they're all children that live in town and their parents are Tapestriers.
They weren't at Pittsburgh every day at all.
But is Tapestry making money from their, like, their child's aid for these kids?
Did they aid them?
Yes, okay. Well, then let's, okay.
Do you need to have a certain number of employees watch a certain number of children by state mandated?
Last summer, they didn't.
Yeah, last summer, it was not mandated. It came up with 27 or 28 kids with three adults that were in and out.
So if the required number for, say, 24 children was six adults, would those six adults go with the children to the?
Go up and take anywhere from eight to 10 kids.
Yeah.
That were toddlers at the, I mean, you know, four, six-year-olds at the crib, so.
Yes, but you watch them.
I absolutely do.
The complaints last year were they weren't being watched.
So, correct me if I'm wrong here, but would the solution be if Tapestry staff went with the appropriate number of children and stayed and corrected their behavior if they got out of line? That's acceptable then?
Oh, yeah, we're not saying they're not allowed there. We're saying that you need to have adequate staff. You're only going to be here for certain hours during the week.
Right.
And you're only going to be here certain days. And it's also a community pool. It's not just a daycare or something.
Yeah, yeah. But I guess Tapestry staff is still on duty with the children and should make them behave.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that issue could be corrected. And hopefully, everything else would be.
I think the staffing is on them. We don't tell them how to staff and how many to put with the kids. So I think the staffing is on them.
Whatever the obligation.
You know, we only need two people with 10 kids. That's their protocol. Wherever they bring kids, they've got two people with 10 kids. So I think that's up to them to decide. I think, and then just like everybody else, and we can find help, but I think it's important that they have help that goes up there that does watch, you know, at least is there to watch the kids kind of and not just, you know. But then we have kids go up that.
Last year, one of the explanations was that part of the problem was staffing at the pool was why they couldn't come over there. So it wasn't just on one side of it, it was on both sides of the case.
Correct. Right. So, on the flip side is that if they don't have, I feel like they have to be allowed to go there. And it's them remedying, how do they get enough people, staff to work, just like we get, how do we get enough staff to work? You know, but we have kids that go up with no parenting and they hang out at the pool all day. So they have a, you know, an argument to make, like, you know?
That's more age. We have certain age limits, so.
Right.
The days that are coming up with Tapestry, you're definitely below that age limit.
Right, right. But I'm still saying it's kids with kids, you know? Even sometime if a kid's older, they get to go with their siblings or something. So it's, you know, them watching it.
We're wondering off here. Tapestry's not my concern. The budget is tonight.
I know, I know, but it's kind of getting to that place of how do we support it? Okay. So, I mean, we could just basically, do you want to revisit this one or do you want to approve it as is? I mean, a part of it is going to be, we could open seven days a week and find that we can only open four days a week because we don't have the staff.
You don't have a problem with going over budget here.
Right.
I mean, I would also say, you know, we're talking about a $1.4 million budget and an increase of $10,000, so.
Yeah, well, this is just one of the beginning.
Right.
I'd still like to see them open seven days a week.
I disagree. Opening seven days a week would include an assistant director also, so there would be a regular director five days a week.
Yeah, I don't have that copy of Angela's.
But it's included. Her, I hate to call her Max, a portion of the package is in, is in your package. So it's the assistant, it's the assistant director, it's the director, it's open seven days a week. It's two days a week for, what do they call it?
Tapestry.
Tapestry. And then a increase in salary for second-year lifeguards to encourage retention.
So do you want to just move forward and say, okay, with this as is? And then if it need be, we need to make scrapes and cuts down the road or we just kind of see how, then we do it after?
Yeah, I'd like to, if every, if all that is included in there, I'd like to approve it unless we come into some problems as we go through the rest of the thing.
Thank you. All right, so is anybody else here for anything else? Any other departments? Megan Zancy, she wants to leave.
Take care.
All right. You want to start from the front of that page then?
We can start from the front page and go forward.
And look through it?
I'm sitting in bowl.
The hole of what? Time?
How much do we get through today?
Oh.
I'm going to lose focus here after.
We are missing our foreman tonight, so we could always revisit Highway, which does take up a lot of time.
Okay, so let's just, let's go, let's start with the first page other than.
Oh, yeah, let's skip revenues. I will say, you can't really, estimating revenues right now is just throwing the ball in the outfield, you know?
So the first account is us, legislative and administrative.
Department 30.
Page number.
You know, I'll put, I'm sorry, I didn't make this super user-friendly because I'm so used to looking at it. I can find it fast, so, but we'll work on it. Your feedback is definitely appreciated. I want to improve it for the next meetings.
Page five.
This is actually gone down, so.
This is where all your savings were. The insurance rates were estimated pretty high. Yeah. And I, by me saying that they would go up would be quite a statement because it would mean that there's personal things going on in my life that are changing significantly. And I don't plan for them to, so it'll stick to a single package. So that's where a lot of your savings were. And then direct labor went down as much because sand was expensive.
Okay, I like this one.
Want to do next one, just Department 32?
Department 31's next, right, count third.
You want to wait for Celia or are you okay?
I think I'm okay to, if you have any, if you have any questions I can't answer, I'll.
It's going down.
Yeah.
Yes, and these rates came, you know, straight from the insurance company.
Did they give you, I felt like I saw it someplace, like a percentage of what the insurance went up or down? You know, what was that, 2%?
I didn't see it.
Yeah, sure.
Oh, yeah.
10% increase overall.
Oh, it actually went down. Next, Department 32, listers. This has the assessor's contract on it.
So let's skip this until we.
Yep.
That's a relative.
Yes. Department 33, elections. I, it doesn't change. And Celia didn't have time to review this and didn't give me any feedback, so unless you have any questions, I won't be away.
There are congressional election next year, so it's going to cost more than it did this year. I think it always goes from 4,000 to 2,000 and then up to 4,000.
33 is good.
Department 34, legal services.
We're looking at contract, you know, bids on that.
On which contract?
On the legal.
Oh, yes, we're waiting on that. I don't, honestly, I don't expect it to go up. So, at least from the fees that I've researched that Vermont leads to cities and towns gives. We'll see what the RFP say, but I don't expect there to be a significant jump in that. Now, eventually, we're going to have to cover the topic of the attorney fees for the dispute on the assessment of the power station. And that is hopefully planned at our next select board meeting where the attorney will come here and give you an idea of where we're at in the process.
Hopefully, he can zoom because he drives from New Hampshire.
I can, yeah, I can request that if that's what the board would like, for sure.
So I think, I mean, we've underspent legal pretty consistently, pretty significantly. I mean, fiscal year 21 was $3,000, almost $2,000, but I think, you know, keeping it at seven makes sense in case you could have a hit with that.
34 is okay.
Department 35, municipal building.
Is the door in here?
No, because it's a one-time purchase and it's not a deposit to be budgeted or like that. It makes your numbers go up and down every year. It looks scary.
Okay, well, we're going to get the money for a one-time purchase.
Celia, I don't have enough knowledge to speak towards this and would rather her do it, but the town voted at the last meeting to invest a surplus to the municipal building fund, I believe.
Yeah, we had some significant savings in the whole thing as I remember it. We had 10,000 or more.
I think it's in what we had bonded for and everything.
I thought we were going to use that for asbestos removal and other things.
We weren't going to do that for now.
The door isn't in here. Okay.
But it's, it goes down.
That fund goes down too.
Right.
We're going to talk about that later, the door too?
Yes, sir.
Planning, commission, and zoning. The only change that was made here was, well, costs did go up. It probably isn't the best method to say that Robert Oberg is going to work three hours every single week. It's going to fluctuate. I was just kind of doing that to get a median rate. Although he did have to be, I did move him into a labor line item because he isn't, he's not a contracted service. So that changed.
So that's the increase in the budget for that.
That is the increase there. But, you know, only my opinion, you know, a zoning administrator for, you know, $2,500 a year isn't too bad.
That was in the pound for anywhere else before?
It was a new contract, or it wasn't a contract, but I think it was just something that happened in 2020, correct? That Robert was onboarded?
Well, he's only been here about six months. The previous zoning administrator was paid from, mostly from fees, permit fees, et cetera, et cetera. Where now it's a direct labor cost. So we'll have to keep an eye on that labor cost this year, because that's, he's only been here like six months.
We're moving on? Okay, Department thirty-seven. There was a lot of, Judy, you might have an update to this. However. The town really didn't get these rates in, uh, well, we didn't get our information in for a while, and a lot of localities were like this, because. This VLCT added fencing and lights to. As, that are now considered town assets. It, it was just really confusing, because even at the ballfields, we had to separate dugouts by fences, by lights, how much are the lights worth? Are the lights on the fence? How long is the fence? How high is the fence? We weren't the only ones struggling with that information, so it was, it was, it was given pretty late. That was a long-winded way of saying, I haven't gotten any information from VLCT regarding the rate increase.
Yeah.
I went with five percent. And that's historically what Stan would do. And whenever I didn't know what to do, I referred to what Stan had been doing, because his numbers are pretty close, even his. I got unemployment rate numbers. Couple days ago, and matching, he was just increasing at five percent or four percent, and it was relatively close, within fifty bucks or so.
Yeah.
Do they give you a property schedule? Schedule with like all the property gap in town?
They did. And that's what we, we had to go through and verify.
Right.
And then, and then add the fencing and lights and sent that back to them.
Tentatively say that's okay, and if something changes?
I don't think it's gonna, I don't think there's gonna be a drastic change. Some of these, you'll see some departments are blank.
Yeah.
Auditing rules can be kinda funky, so before I go in there and delete or add anything, I just wanna check with the auditors to make sure we can do it. So we can skip Department thirty-eight and go to the transfer station. This was an early Zoom meeting for me, before I think I was formally appointed. But. So I don't know a whole lot about the transfer station, but I did speak with Mark Shea. And from what I understood, is we have to have one can up there for, for the permit to be maintained. So that's why I've got twenty dollars and thirty cents in that lineup. If, Stan encouraged me to, to remind the select board that if we did wanna, that if the town did wanna start doing. Transfer station days again, it's something we should consider. Before we adopt this budget for approval at town meeting.
You know, one is our, our permit, I think, is coming up.
Next calendar year.
Yeah.
I believe so.
Yeah. And. I think it's valuable to kind of indicate to the state that we're, we're still using it, just in case.
I believe Stan said if we don't use it, we have to close it.
Yeah.
That's gonna be.
The closure cost were going to be astronomical.
And also if we ever need one.
Yes, so it's better to keep it. In the state that it is.
All right, sounds good.
Moving on to curbside, I apologize, this, this did create an increase as well.
We knew this was gonna happen though.
Okay, yeah, okay.
Yeah, we, we knew, because what, in our former contract, it had been so long that they were, they were actually paying for recycling at one point. Um, and in the last five years with China and India, do we go recycling to regional market for anymore?
I, well, I didn't have a year's worth of data to estimate these costs, so what I did was took what we paid so far, which was like three or four bills, and. Found a median, found a mean and then went a little higher, so we're, I'm thinking that's where we're gonna land on recycling.
Yeah, because we put it out for bid and the, the only, the second bid that we had was astronomical, because they were going to have to. Purchase, we were going to have to purchase in the contract for all new containers. Because these were owned by Casella, so that just made changing way too. We, that's what that bid, that second bid was.
Middlebury was, yeah.
Yeah.
The disposal fees were also way higher too.
Yes, yeah.
Good job.
Not that this is true.
No, no.
I think I could do the highway department, but we, we can wait.
Yeah.
I think that one we oughta really wait till John is.
It's a big one.
Yeah.
Okay, and we'll skip the. The capital improvement projects. Because these are, these are bonded.
I think we're halfway there.
Yeah.
If not more, yeah, because the only big one that's left is the highway fund.
Yeah.
It's, I'm not sure how you've been looking at it in the past, but it's nice to see the, the actuals and the prior years and to see the change. It kinda makes the process feel like a little smoother. I'll put page numbers on it next time.
We got the fire department? If we skipped highway, skipped highway building.
Right, so we should go police?
Yeah.
You have to account?
I checked the contract, I don't know why it was. You see, I mean FY twenty-one, you're at eighty thousand, actual eighty thousand. The actual in FY twenty-one was eighty thousand, so it was below what was budgeted last year. And after reviewing the contract, we've got an annual rate, well, it's billed monthly, but it adds up to eighty-one thousand. You know, so what, what did I say over here, per contract, three thousand, four hundred and thirteen eleven cents billed bi-monthly, eighty-one thousand, nine hundred and fourteen dollars and fifty-six cents now. I'm not, maybe Stan was budgeting for extra services. But even if you look at your, like I said, if you look at your FY twenty-one actuals, you're.
Yeah.
You're still below it.
Extra events and things like town events for your fire, does that come into play with that budget, or is that just a different budget?
We don't, I, well, I, I don't foresee any need to have them come in and do something special like that this year.
We do, we do one more parade.
Oh.
We used to, we did this year though, all festival.
That's what I was thinking.
We used to do the fireworks, but lots of times they're on duty.
Yeah, they just take.
I would just swing by, but we do for the parade, we definitely do.
We pay him for forty hours if there's a parade. Right, we say, we want you to be here, eight hours for the parade and make it forty for the rest of the week.
So. The. Might be showing our cards here, but I'm sure they know the contract. I read over it and saw that if gas prices go over three dollars and fifty cents, they can amend it, so.
Yeah.
Are we there yet or no?
We're.
I don't know. I got some today and it was like three thirty-five or.
Well, I doubt they're paying retail. I would assume they have contracts, it's like.
Oh, yeah.
They use credit cards, but I don't know if they're commercial credit cards.
They used to do the fuel stuff.
Yeah.
Back in teaser school.
Yeah. Like the truckers, yeah.
I would think we're probably pretty close on that. Yeah, there isn't much here.
Vermont's white.
Yeah, they gotta be there, so.
Swimming pool, we did.
Uh, not yet.
Oh, wow.
Tentative.
One whole hole though.
Low budget?
Increase in parks, so. I, okay, so the contract is fifteen thousand, four hundred and fifty, and Bruce, I think you verified that. However, our FY twenty-one actuals were eighteen thousand. And even in FY twenty-one, it was budgeted for eighteen thousand, so I'm just not sure where that extra two thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars has been going. If we've been asking for extra services from them or.
That was a flat rate, wasn't it, that?
Yes, the managers signed the contract and lifeguards, we know their prices, ice makers.
Well, this is just mosquito control stuff.
Mosquito control.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
This year I feel like we sprayed more than they did other years.
They certainly did, yes, they said that. Yeah.
We certainly got our money's worth out of them.
So Michael, can you just touch base with, what are we calling it now, our value, what are the?
Uh, can we, we'd like to talk a little bit about that later on, before we adjourn.
Okay.
Here's a, just need to do a couple things.
That could even be, I could probably just look at invoices and probably get to the bottom of that.
What?
Uh, why, why the cost went up, I just have to ask Celia and see what happened, what, what that twenty-five hundred and fifty dollars was.
I mean, previous years it was eighteen.
So it did get there.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just don't know why.
I, I questioned fifteen, four fifty more than I do the eighteen thousand.
Yeah, fifteen, four fifty is for the mosquito district.
What we paid.
Yes.
Wonder why we budgeted eighteen thousand?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know why we did.
Wasn't there a year where we had, we had budgeted a certain amount and we had to make a second payment, because they don't. I remember something with that. Um, I don't remember, what we had budgeted wasn't quite enough and we had to finish paying in the next fiscal year.
Yeah, I don't.
All right, so the only increase in that one is basically the mosquitoes.
Yeah. Because that's what they were talking about the other night.
The budget maybe.
Yeah. Fifteen, four fifty.
Yeah.
Department seventy-six?
Library. I'm just imagining that that's staying the same, I haven't heard any different. Also wears Waldo poster up there that I think might be misleading. But we'll get to the bottom of that. Okay, Department eighty, question mark, question mark, question mark. Department ninety-three, taxes and assessment.
What is Department eighty?
I don't know, that's, I think it might have just been put in the system there for a place marker for future.
The lowest budget item that we have. The, Department ninety-three. The, we have, it's, it's broken down here as chamber and economic development, and then chamber, so we can get rid of, well, chamber's got zero in it. So I'm assuming the chamber and economic development is the one that Lyle Jepson came and spoke on and asked for.
Right, because he, and this is the way I figured that, and he was throwing, I, I think I remember him throwing that one thousand, six hundred and forty dollar number around.
Right, it's a dollar per person.
Right, population, yes.
And there is an updated census from two thousand and ten, I apologize for that too, but I think it's less, by a few people.
Well, I just saw a census someplace and that we were up higher than we were before.
Was that right?
Yeah.
It was, the last one I saw was like seventeen.
The new census that just came out, yeah.
So we're off about seventeen dollars.
But we don't have it in here, it's not, I'm saying there's zero in here.
No, but if you do go up to the, I moved that cost up to the Rutland County marketing.
Okay, that's a different committee.
Okay. It's strange that it's. It's the same though. Is that one dollar per resident as well, or?
No, I think that was just a.
Okay.
I think the marketing is a dollar, the other one is I B. Because the marketing is what you're paying that they came and talked about.
Yeah, and they gave a handout.
Right, but that's through the chamber and economic development.
Right, because that's what you pay a dollar per person.
Right.
Yeah.
But I'm saying, we have like three categories here, we should just.
Because you can't take them out of NEMR.
Yeah.
Even though they die.
Okay.
They have to stay.
But we can put sixteen, forty under chamber and economic development.
Do we need to though?
Oh, so it's assigned to the right organization, I guess, it doesn't matter.
Oh, I, okay, I thought for. See, this is what's, this is why I figured this, because look, if you see under FY twenty-two budget.
Yes.
Nothing was budgeted.
Right.
But there was an actual.
Right.
So I think those two line items have, have been combined over the last couple years. They just weren't, the money wasn't being allocated correctly on them. I know that's not easy to, a lot of this stuff took a while for me to be able to wrap my mind around, and I'm not a hundred percent sure I'm correct, but I think that's what was happening.
Yeah.
Because you didn't budget last year for it, but it was charged anyway. And that one thousand, seven, seven hundred and forty-one people is one dollar per person. So, and you didn't have an actual, no money came out in.
Right.
In FY twenty-one.
But we did budget last.
That's right, we got the minus.
We did budget last year for, for Reddick, which was the chamber and economic development, we did budget sixteen, forty.
You did, but it didn't come out of there.
No.
Well, we don't have.
Oh, you don't know yet, you're right, I'm sorry, you don't know yet, you don't like that.
They're drawn.
I think the marketing could be, there was another marketing group that created. The, the chamber created, Rutland marketing video and stuff.
I thought it was Rutland Planning Commission and the chamber?
No, the chamber and Reddick.
Economic Development and the Chamber merged.
Yeah, Reddick and the Chamber, so, I just don't wanna pay, I mean, if we agree to pay the sixteen for it, that's fine, I'm just, don't know if that marketing was a one-time.
Well, it's just.
Well, I'm not budgeting for sixteen, forty.
We didn't pay it because it's a, in parentheses.
So, yeah, I'm not budgeting for sixteen, forty this year.
Right.
So we're not giving to the?
No. Well, it's, it's in parentheses over in the change column.
So can we just make sure that we don't need to budget for it, I think that's what.
Yeah, yeah, we can do that.
I'm just saying, he asked, and if we, we didn't ever get an answer, so the answer's no, we're not giving to you. Is that it?
Oh, what does he call his, what, what does he call that? That, it's called the Rutland, the, the, the program that he's, that he's, that we're committing to. It's the, it's the Rutland County marketing, right?
Yeah.
And I, and that's what he calls it.
Yeah, marketing and, and chamber.
No, it's, it's the Rutland Economic Development something.
It's in the minutes for our last meeting.
And he asked for sixteen, forty, which we never voted on if we were gonna do it or not.
Yeah, but I think his numbers are off, because one dollar per person doesn't equal sixteen, forty.
It was more than that.
Well, that's what he went off the census as the last population and proctor's sixteen, forty.
Yeah, but I think.
He said, they were here from the Chamber and Economic Development of Rutland Region, and asking to discuss proctor's participation in a regional marketing initiative.
And they're asking for a dollar per person in proctor's, proctor's contribution that is currently built into the budget.
Yeah.
So that's sixteen, forty. So because, I think, like you said, you can't take lines out of NEMR sometime, I think originally it was the chamber, we gave the chamber like five hundred dollars, we gave Reddick.
Well, Reddick is still in there for five hundred dollars.
Right.
Reddick is above for this blank line, Reddick's still in there for five hundred dollars.
Yeah.
Rutland Economic Development for was Reddick.
Right, so that's gotta come out.
Right?
Yeah. That's gotta come out of the budget, and the chamber's gotta come out of the budget, and they are combined now with chamber and economic development, and that's the sixteen, forty.
Why don't you give Lyle a buzz and clarify that?
You okay with that Judy, me kinda just figuring out and getting back to you?
Oh, I'm fine, I know, because we, I deal with it.
Oh, then you. Oh, then you...
In the city, we do the same thing, we, we know there was Reddick and there was a Chamber, and they combined.
So what would I do, so what would I do here? I know you said it, but...
So they, basically what they did is they combined their fees, so we don't, we don't need to give to the two, the Reddick and the Chamber, we would just donate the Chamber and Economic Development.
By Reddick, what do you mean?
The five hundred dollars.
Okay. Oh, got it.
See where we didn't do that last year?
Yeah, we didn't do it last year, okay.
Because that doesn't exist.
So cross that out?
Yeah.
Done.
And the Chamber, cross it.
Okay, so you're not in favor of giving the one dollar per person to the Chamber?
Oh, I am.
Yes, we are.
It's just, it's just going to be under...
Different line.
Rutland, it's going to be under Rutland County Marketing for one thousand seven hundred and forty-one. And I don't need to make up that five hundred anywhere, it's gone?
It's gone, and, and, and... We budget it under Chamber and Economic Development.
Oh, so you want...
Fifty-five, ninety-three hundred fifty, sixty-five.
So that's where you want the five hundred to go?
No, sixteen forty, five hundred goes away.
Five hundred goes away, okay.
Right.
Because they don't exist, it's part of, the Chamber and Reddick joined, so it's one organization now. Does that make sense?
But the sixteen forty doesn't exist anymore either.
No, it does.
It does. That's what we're donating for to Lyle.
That was the, the twenty-ten census, we've got the, the new census.
You got six, oh, well, if we go, do we really have that, though? I mean, he's going with sixteen forty, I think.
I think we do whatever they're requesting.
Well, they're going to send to the reports.
Just like the, the next department, all of these are going to come over the next couple of...
But if anything, it's going to be like fifty dollars more, only...
I don't, really, when it comes down to it, is I don't think there's an error in your total, except for the, if we're taking the five hundred out, now it's going to be five hundred cheaper.
So we're about a thousand over budget, roughly.
All right, and the last one's our vote in.
Are we approving that? Is okay?
Department ninety-three?
Yep.
I think so.
Department ninety-nine? What did you say, ninety-three?
I said ninety-three, ninety-nine is the...
Right, that's what I said, oh, I didn't know he didn't know, didn't die, he did. All right.
That's got to be in the...
So ninety-nine is okay to use, huh?
I think so, I mean, I, we know...
I don't, you haven't gotten all these requests yet, have you?
Yeah, we don't do that till I...
I'm going to get them from every individual agency that's going to send you a letter.
Yeah, usually after we approve that.
Well, we kind of did a wipe on the, on the budget here.
Well, you didn't have, you know, I'm not proposing anything crazy, it's just my first year, you know, so I don't want to scare anybody.
Well, plus, I think it's good to, we're already into December, halfway through December, you know?
Do we want to have a meeting this coming Monday and try and finish this up, or you think we're all right?
Um, I can't make a Monday meeting. I think we're pretty...
I think we're into January, or at least December last year, not...
Yeah, usually I like it by the end of December, so...
Yeah, so we've got time.
Okay.
Well, we, yeah, we have, aside from the pool, which is kind of a policy thing, you know, I've got some pretty small corrections and not so much corrections, but I've got some, some easy questions to answer.
Right, right, yeah, they're simple, they're not like...
Yeah, reassess the review.
Where do we cut five hundred thousand dollars? Okay. A door bid?
Uh, the, you know, the ball's in our court on that one. Uh, we've got, where we're at now is we've got two bids that are, that are standing. And, you know, we, we, we have a few options, and sometimes I go through this exercise with people to kind of outline what the different paths look like, but I think it's pretty clear here where we, we have Giancola, who came in high, but did the rehab work down there, so knows the, the, uh, the footprint and the layout of the bids.
Knows what's in the walls.
And you've got another bid from someone who's gotten really great reviews from, um, from people that seem pretty, who have good credit, and, um, but may not know as well as Giancola, now, I don't, I don't know whether that's an accurate statement or not, but...
I think that's true.
Just won't know the layout as well. So you've got the two bids, um...
They said their price could go up if they were requested to come up with a plan or a sketch.
Yeah, they didn't want to get into the, uh, doing the, doing the sketch or engineering of it. Wasn't it?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
So, um, so that's where we're at with it, and, and I, I'm not sure if it's something that's going to go away. You know, as much as I'd like to see it get off the agenda, I'm not sure it's, it's going to disappear into nothingness, just because of security reasons, you know, even here, um, I hate to put myself into it, but, you know, I have to stay here to wait for a Peg TV, and I can't go get a coffee or, or french fries or anything, because I can't lock the treasures off the store and let people come in and now we need to come out. So it, it, it's complicated.
It's a definite security problem, and we, we need to take care of it.
Yeah, and, you know, I, I spoke to Celia a bit about it, and, you know, it, it's unfortunate, but even when you do a project at home, you look back and you say, tag on, we should have done that while we were here, you know? Uh, not trying to justify, you know, the history behind it, but it, it is what it is, and, um, and here we are.
Yeah, yeah, because, you know, the computers are there, we have some other things that aren't really the way they should be, and we, we should have cut that, the, all of us, but we didn't.
Can you remind us of the prices again? Eight thousand something.
Can you give me two seconds?
Um, would we even consider one of those iron or steel, whatever they are? I know, I know, it wouldn't look chintzy, but it would not look as precious as a glass door and all that.
And I do have to add, since we didn't have an architectural drawing, the bids weren't perfect, so, um, so Giancola was high. Now, one thing Giancola was proposing, that Academy Construction was not proposing, were windows along the framing, yeah. So Giancola came in at, this was, now, I'm hoping the bid is still valid, but I haven't looked over it to see, I'm not sure if they gave me a timeline, all quotes proposal valid for twenty days. So it might have changed, but most likely pass it, I'll check with them. Seven thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars. That was Giancola.
I thought you were up to ten.
Well, it came down when we asked for, uh...
Oh, without the cabinet stuff.
And, um, Academy Construction was five thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars.
Yeah, that's right, yeah. So...
And, and I, and I had sent out another bid and didn't receive it, didn't, didn't receive it in time.
Yeah. Well, I, I would like to do that for eight thousand dollars and get it done.
So he told you what kind of door you, he was using, Giancola did?
They're going to, they're going to make it, from what I believe is it's just going to match the door that you enter into from the side here, so you're going to have the, it's going to be the, I guess, maple, I'm not sure what type of wood it is, but it's going to be the light colored wood with the window, and then the, what'd you call them?
Side lights.
Side lights with that same colored wood. And then they have to be careful for the radiant heat in the, in the ground.
Right.
And then they also, you know, so they're just not putting in a door, they're actually framing in a door, and they have to redo the ceiling, because the ceiling does this kind of funky thing, so...
And then Academy didn't say specify what kind of door they're putting?
Uh, remove existing suspended ceiling as necessary to allow, to allow installation of top plate wall header, dimensionally framed wall section continuous with door opening, I won't break all that. Hold on, so, um, install one and three-fourth non-rated commercial series birched unfinished door with vision kit, quarter inch tempered glass, flush bead tempered, four and a half inch brush chrome hinges, FJP pine double, uh, rabbeted, six by nine sixteen door jamb. So what I understand that to be is a glass door. With birch, with birch, correct?
That's the other company.
That is Academy Construction, and, and Academy Construction, don't get me wrong, from my conversation with them, did have an idea of what our needs were, what we were suggesting, it's just their, their proposal did not include the, um, glass, and, and that was just, that's in, that's just an, an error in advertisement, I guess.
Why don't you see what Giancola, if there's any change in the pricing?
What if there weren't change in pricing? Go for it.
Did we give Academy an opportunity, did I update their, um, bids since there was a change? I mean, that's two thousand, two thousand two hundred and ten dollars.
In one of our other board meetings, I think that you came back with some updated information, because we asked for drawings, and Academy said that something like if they were requested to furnish a sketch, the price would go up.
Yes, because we didn't bid out a design.
Oh, so Giancola would do the same thing?
Yeah, you're asking, you're holding one person accountable for something because you requested, but you didn't ask them for the other one, so it's not equitable in what you're requesting from two contractors. So you're saying to us that it's two thousand two hundred and ten, and Giancola's going to do a better job than Academy Construction, and I know Academy Construction, they've done work in our neighborhood, and, uh, and so they came with excellent references.
The only unfair at this, the only unfair thing at this point is that I would have to rebid it, because the bids, because the, the bids have been made public, so if I were to...
Absolutely, but you're punishing one bidder because you didn't bid correctly. And you're punishing them to the advantage for two thousand two hundred and ten dollars.
Well, it's going to cost us some to rebid it and...
Unless you went for the lower bid.
Yeah, and Giancola's is eight thousand seventy, seventy-nine sixty, so if they'll hold that bid...
Right, so what we're saying, those twenty-two hundred dollars more.
And we could, and we could accept or deny a change order, so if, so if we did do a change, if we did award the contract and do a change order with Academy Construction, and they said it was going to be twenty-two hundred bucks, we could say they're not interested.
Then are we going to ask them?
Well, I think that Giancola did the renovations. They have or should have knowledge of everything that's in there structurally already. And to me, that's worth at least half of that, twenty-two hundred. And I think they, it sounds to me as though they have a design in mind, they, they probably already know the product they would install in that space.
But we have no way of knowing if Academy's, that it's half the same thing.
Have you proposed to, to find out, I mean, what is the process we'd use to do that?
I'm just going with the lower bid.
We reward the bid to Academy, if it, if it turned out that it was going to be an extra four thousand dollars on the change order, we, we approve, just on that.
I think it'll still look nice.
I'm sure they're going to do a good job, even it's a door. I mean, it's not like we're talking like...
Now, I'm concerned that it's going to open a can of worms if somebody wrecks the floor, gets into the ceiling. I mean, you know, I'm going to doomsday right there, you know?
Oh, you're doing very responsible for the work.
We had issues when the building was being renovated with things not being oversights that should have been hot, you know? I mean, I wouldn't go with a lower bid just because it's lower, if, I mean, by standards, you usually do.
Sure.
You know, I'd go with a higher bid just because, you know...
Well...
The seventy-nine, what was the other company?
Five seven fifty.
Yeah, Academy was five thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars, and they did outline the materials that they were using, so, um...
Maybe it'll be fabulous.
Could be.
Uh, what's everybody's opinion?
I'd make a suggestion that you would check with Academy and get them to adjust their pricing to what you would like, and if it works, then so be it, if it doesn't work, then go with your option B, and just have Michael take care of it, and then you guys would be alleviated from it.
We would have to go back out to bid, wouldn't we, if we did that?
We could negotiate the bid, but if I were a betting man, I'd say that Academy would rescind, just because we've, we've prolonged the, uh, the agreement, or potential agreement.
What's everyone's thoughts?
I just want to get it done.
I'd say let's go with a little bit, we have the option to, to deal with it if there is a huge price increase. As you said, they come really highly recommended, um, it's not, it's a pretty simple job. I'll make a motion to accept Academy's bid.
Is there a second?
Okay, as long as they know about the heating in the floor and the circulation problems.
And I met with them onsite, and we explained that all to them, so they seem to have a pretty good idea of that.
Let's get it done.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm opposed.
You want you to call, or you just don't want to?
I don't want a door, I don't, you know?
Oh, you don't want the door?
We have, I mean, we need to put a door in, and, this, we've never had a door before. Now all of a sudden, this is a security issue.
Linda, you refraining from voting?
Oh, no, I, I, I go along with it because I think that a door is necessary in this day and age, and it dots the i's and crosses the t's. I agree with you, it should have been dealt with way before, there should have been...
Going to the Academy.
There's a major crime we have in common right now, sort of robbery, so I think that's a good idea. I mean, okay, so there's a lack of, serious lack of plan, okay, that's beside everything, but there should be some type of security.
We have the opportunity, let's do it.
Yeah, get it done.
Okay, it's done. All right, is there a motion to go into the executive session to discuss town manager's three-month performance review as part of the contract?
Just before we do that, Bruce and I were at the mosquito district budget meeting the other night, and a couple of towns joining there, the Brandon, Lester, Sol, Berry, you know, they want to change their name to the Otter Creek Watershed Insect Control District. Does the board have a problem with a name change?
Sounds good to me.
Is that an acronym for it?
Uh, they just call it OCW.
Better than OCD.
Hey, thank you.
Hey, is there a motion to go into executive session to discuss town manager's three-month performance review as part of the contract? Ben moved, and Tom seconded, at least, I don't know here. On favor?
Aye.